Hey, my name is Paul Velayd. I'm representing the Daily Herald Editorial Board. And we're having an endorsement meeting with the Hawthorne District 73 School Board candidates, Carl Borchers, Michael Engel, and Wes Poland. Is it Poland? I'm sorry. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, I think two L's would be Poland. So we're going to ask them a series of questions and they're going to get a chance to to answer. So Carl, I'm going to start with you. Looks like the in-person days could increase to four days starting mid-March, March 15th. What do you think of this plan?
I think it's a great plan. I think it falls right in line with what we've done as a district, which is we've leaned on the experts, we've leaned on the data, we trusted science to make decisions. And also empowered Dr. Hannigan to to be able to make that call as the leader of of the district from administrative perspective. So I was at the meeting last night when it was revealed and I happened to be out outside the meeting because of the COVID restrictions on the population and people who came to speak and rightfully so expressed their concerns and desire for more schooling. You could you could tell there was a positive response to it. I think it's starting to meet the needs of some of our some of our parents in the community who are seeking that out. But it's also balancing what we need to do for our parents and families to still want to go for remote option because they have that choice. So it's bottom line, it's great. I'm very, very happy to see that.
And then just real quick, if they are remote, they they are going to stay remote the rest of these this spring, is that correct? Or do they have a chance to go in person?
I I don't know that with pure confidence. I don't want to answer that out of turn. So but I think that's one of those great follow-up questions that, you know, take you as a community member. If you don't understand that from what we've communicated so far, I think that's a good example of how the board and administration can continue to make sure people understand that answer.
Okay, all right. Michael, how about you?
I think, you know, the path that we've been on has been the right one, you know, I think we've kind of held to our convictions and we've, you know, we've held back, you know, where others have really pushed, we've kind of stayed the course and we've we've stayed by what we believe has been the safest the safest route. It may not have been the most popular route, but sometimes that's not the right answer, just the popular answer. So I think we've done a good job of staying the course and we, you know, are now going into the two days of hybrid and looking at slowly expanding that into the four days, you know, and and an eventual, you know, rollout into in person, which of course is what everybody wants. And I don't I don't think there's any argument about that. That's the that's the end game with all this, get everybody back in school. But to do it safely, do it at the right time and do it for the right reasons, not just because it's a a want. Now, so I think the board needs to continue to do what they're doing and working with Dr. Hannigan. Looking at the medical advice and seeing what fits and what works best for us and make sure that that advice and those numbers work for our district. And if they do, then absolutely, it's it's time to move forward and start seeing what we can do to get more people in the school. That's that's the goal. It just has to be done safely. That's all.
Okay, Wes, how about you?
Hi. Yes, from day one, keeping Hawthorne students, staff and family safe has definitely been our number one priority. And throughout this entire process, the board chose science, not politics, to drive our decisions about how and when students would return into our buildings. Um, you know, our school district has been open since August 31st. Um, our, you know, our buildings have just been closed. Um, but you know, our kids have been learning. Which is, you know, I believe that's really important. And our return to in-person learning was based on local health data and conditions and district specific information. You know, I believe our board has been very intentional and consistent about our plan. And, um, you know, I think it's also important to note that we did not modify our plan when we were pressured from a very small vocal minority. Um, you know, we supported Dr. Hannigan's plan. And we followed our plan. So I'm very proud of that. To touch upon the question that you asked Carl about those students who were, if they were remote, if they could come to hybrid. The reason why we're able to go in person more days is because about 50% of the population chose to stay home. So we have the space. Um, now, there are some classrooms that have less children than others, less students. And so if there is a family whose circumstances may have changed. We just or they've been instructed to contact their building administrator. Um, I do know that there is a waitlist in some schools and classrooms. Um, because it just so happened that that particular class, more students chose hybrid than remote.
Okay, so it's kind of a case by case. If there's room in the remote, they might be able to come back as as like a hybrid or in person. Okay. And then I think I saw.
I do want to clarify, it was because, you know, we did have 50% of our population that did choose remote, that's allowing us um, the ability to maintain the social distance of six feet and have our students return more days.
Okay, all right, very good. Very good, thank you. And then, Michael, let me ask you this question. So how do you think the remote learning is going? And if you have any changes or thoughts on that?
Yeah, you know, I for something that came out of nowhere like this and there was no plan, no playbook. You know, it's really amazing how quickly our district was able and all districts really, you know, to be able to pull this together, to be able to allow students to be remote. Where that type of an offering was never really in place. There wasn't some, you know, three-week month-long gap where nothing was going on while we tried to figure it out. It was immediate. You know, they they were able to get Chromebooks to the students. They were able to arrange material, bag pickups on a regular basis for students to have materials to bring home. Putting together the Zoom links and coordinating with the teachers. You know, it might have been a little rocky at the end of last year, but by the time this year started, it was pretty well pulled together. You know, I I think they have done to, you know, to the best of their ability to see education continue. And I don't think anybody will argue that it's a substitute for in-person. But to be able to continue education and to keep everything moving forward so that we can get to that next level of getting back in school. I think the district has done a fantastic job. I think they've shown resilience. I think they've stayed focused. You know, the the staff, the board, Dr. Hannigan, working together to, you know, look out for the best interest of the students to keep them safe, but also keep that education process moving.
All right. Thank you, Wes.
Yes, um, you know, I would be lying if I said that last spring went well. Um, you know, it was rough and but I do truly believe that our teachers and administrators did the absolute best job they could given the circumstances. And the way that they were able to adapt their in-person learning. I mean, over a weekend to remote, it's pretty, pretty exceptional. And so I'm very proud of our staff and teachers because I do know it wasn't easy. Um, and, you know, last spring was survival. I do know that, um, you know, it's it hasn't been easy for all families. Some families, it's better, you know, it's the adjustment has been better for some than others. Our fall offering of remote platform. I I believe is again fantastic, given the circumstances. Is it a replacement for in-person learning? Absolutely not. I have two kids, like the third grader and a fifth grader. And I want I want them in person. I want them to see their teachers. But we're in the middle of a pandemic. And, uh, you know, I am hopeful that, you know, we're there's a light at the end of the tunnel and we're getting closer with the vaccination rollout. Um, but, you know, we're still in a pandemic and, um, we've been doing the best that we can. We've been trying to service, you know, the students in the best way possible. Um, the teachers are going above and beyond. We're providing the hotspots, the one-to-one technology. Um, and so I'm very proud of the district and what we've been able to do.
Just a follow-up question on students that are like struggling. Are they going directly to the teachers to get help or is the district itself offering a little more help with those kids or what's what's happening there, I guess?
Well, the the classroom teacher is the first line of contacts. Okay. Um, and so if there's, you know, an issue, then the teacher would work with the building administrator, the support staffs within the school. Um, you know, that's really not the job of the board. So I don't, you know, we don't hear, you know, the ins and outs and like, oh, this teacher offered this services. Um, but, you know, I do know Allison Stein, our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. You know, they've really been focusing on that and, um, you know, focusing on the social emotional learning. Which is, you know, very important. Um, and and last fall, the district sent out, uh, how are we doing survey? How are you doing? And in the survey, it specifically asked parents that they were struggling, if their children were struggling. Um, and, uh, through that point of contact, the district reached out to those families. And, um, it's my understanding that the services were provided or, you know, whatever, to the best of our ability.
Okay, yeah, that's great. I was just curious when you said that. So and Carl, how about you? How do you think the remote remote learning is is going?
Yeah, so so my perspective on this is is a little different than Wes and Michael. So my my kids are currently not in the district. My my youngest or my oldest, I should say, will begin kindergarten this next year. Okay, so so it's hit us personally in a different way when we didn't have access to to childcare, full-time working professionals, my wife and I. But, you know, from what my experiences have been with learning. It's been through the community, my my neighbors, people in my community, people I know who have kids that are in varying ages. Some that are just slightly older than than my daughter who experienced kindergarten remotely because of the pandemic. But also neighbors and friends who have kids who are older in the district that are, you know, elementary or middle school. And I'll be honest, I've heard I've heard the spectrum. I've heard and it tends to be, and I think it'd be hard to disagree, like for a kindergartner, for their first tangible school experience to be over a screen is obviously not ideal. It's not what we desire. And I know there was a lot of frustration from the parents and friends that I know that had children that had to work on that attention span, you know, doing things in bite sizes, but then having to keep an eye on them while trying to balance work, whatever priorities they have. But I also know on on the front end, those children within the community that have talked to their parents or even just engaged with the kids in conversations, like the older ones, you know, they took the spring for what it was, but it seems like as of the fall, like everybody had a has a good cadence. And, you know, ideally, we would have liked not to be in that position in the fall as the world would, but that's the position we were in. And I think that to some degree gave some parents a a way to prepare, hope for the best, but know like the spring was putting it together the best we can as a society. But the fall was likely going to be the same situation and try to make a balance. And I know not everybody can accommodate that. But again, for for me, it's it's been more of a learning experience outside looking in. And and so I've just tried to keep my ears open and just be, you know, listening to those that are going through it. So that, given the opportunity to represent the community as a board member, I don't lose sight of that, that there's a variety of experiences, you know, people coming into it or getting used to it or thriving in it.
All right, thank you very much. Let's catch up on my notes here real quick. All right, Wes, how about you? Um, let's see, we got here. So looking, I guess, to the this upcoming fall and beyond, I mean, how do you see the future of the district if and when COVID, you know, subsides?
The future of the district? Well, for this fall, I would like to see the future of the district. Be that we are in person five days a week and at the same time, we have a remote option for those families and students who, for whatever reason, they may choose. And I do believe because we have invested in the technology now and the teachers have been trained, receive the professional development on the live streaming, we're set up for that. So they can have the same, the teachers, um, you know, and they can do the small group work. Some may be on a Chromebook. Um, you know, some may be in the classroom, but that's what I would like to see. Because again, going back to remote learning is not a substitution for in-person. And we want to get our kids back in the buildings. I mean, we passed a building referendum in 2018. And, you know, Middle School South is under construction, got a, you know, great new gym. I mean, we've have been investing in our facilities. We have a brand-new kindergarten center, you know, Hawthorne School for Young Learners. And it wasn't until the first week in February that you know, students actually got to sit in those seats. And, um, and especially, you know, I was on the kindergarten center planning committee. That was my first assignment when I was elected in 2017. So to see that come to fruition has been awesome. Um, but it was sad that last fall, we couldn't open the doors. Um, so it, you know, I mean, we're doing, you know, we're doing great things. Dr. Hannigan, um, has a plan. He just presented our new strategic plan, collective commitments and district goals last night. We will vote on them at our next meeting. And, uh, you know, then we can move forward with aligning everything to that. Um, and I I'm very excited for the future of Hawthorne, even in a pandemic. We're doing great things.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Uh, Michael?
You know, I'm I'm looking forward to next year. You know, I think we're going to be kind of like I said before, I think we're headed in the right direction. You know, I don't know if 100% in-person is going to be at the start of the school year, but I think we're definitely going to be seeing more people. You know, at minimum, we're going to be seeing an increase of students in the classrooms. Still having that option for people who want to be remote. But at some point next year, you know, it'd be great to see everybody back in school. Again, I think that's the goal. But I think some of the things that we're going to have to kind of keep an eye on and we're going to have to continue to be aware of is, you know, students who need some of those extra accommodations. I know we're already seeing it now a little bit, but certainly, once we get back in and we're seeing more people back into the school. Uh, I know I talked about this in one of the other forums we were in, but, you know, students that are high-risk medical conditions or have an IEP, we're going to have to kind of pay a little bit more attention to that. Behavioral health or emotional support outlets, I think are going to be very important. You know, just like they are now with being remote, I think, once people get back into school, you might have some of those anxieties as well. People are going to be so used to being home. But now they're going to be back and be around people. And I think you just kind of have that little bit of a culture shock, you know, once you start getting back to normal now. You know, and I think that goes for parents. It goes for all of us who haven't been doing, you know, the social things. I think it's going to be weird the first time you're you're around a group of people. Even if it is a classroom or if you're working from home and you're going back to work. I think you're going to have a little bit of that. Well, how close should I get to these people? What's okay now? You know, now we're in this big setting. And when you're younger, you know, some of these students might have some anxiety. So we just have to be able to make sure that we're, you know, kind of comforting and we're talking about it in school, talking about it at home. Having some of these programs available to, you know, to help out with that. But I think, you know, we got it. We just have that return. And I think we just have to be cognizant of, you know, those different kind of social aspects of it.
All right, thank you very much. And Carl?
Yeah, so, um, along with what Wes and Michael have saying, aligned with with a lot of the the aspects and the hopes for the future. I think the the one thing I'll I'll add from my own perspective is for what we've been going through, let's learn from it. We are a learning community. We are about teaching our students to be learners. If you think, if you look at the mission of the district today about teaching children to learn in an ever-changing world, that's what this world has been. Um, and then if you even look at what Dr. Hannigan is proposing for the mission moving forward to learning everyone and that learning for everyone and every day. It it's still its focus. So I want to make sure from where I can keep an, you know, a perspective on things is it's been very stressful, what we've all gone through. But there's things we've learned about it. We've learned the best leverage technology even in a traditional school setting, but also use it when we can't have a traditional school setting. So for me, I'm very optimistic that when the world turns away from this and we go back to what normal can look like for what many of us know and our children don't know as well from their, you know, lack of, you know, years seeing what the world can be like for them. There are still things that we can take from this that are going to make them better citizens and better learners because they've had different ways to learn outside of a traditional classroom setting. But again, just to emphasize everything Michael and Wes were saying about we will continue from my perspective and what I can control will continue to remain, have accommodations for those that aren't, if we're not completely ready. Um, and we're not going to lose sight of the anxiety and the concerns it can create outside of an academic setting, but just socially. Getting our our children back into a place of the world that we know, that we've all known in our lives for the most part.
All right, very good. Thank you. Okay, still good. And then Carl, we'll start with you too. It's my last question. So what qualifications do you have for the job to be on the board?
Getting off a mute here for a second, that'd be a good qualification is know how to use a computer when you need to. Yeah, no, it's it's a good question. So, you know, first for me, I don't think there's a perfect board candidate. Because a board is meant to be representative of its community and it should have an aspect of diversity in a variety of ways. So so I hope to add to what the collective that the board is. So, you know, just a little bit about me and where I think my my value add is as a representative of the community is is I'll start with perspective. So as I kind of alluded to before, uh, my personal background right now is is I'm a member of the community that's children are going to start in the district over the next one, two, four, five years. So for me, the experience of being a parent and experiencing our curriculum, our district's experiences, I've not gone through those yet. So for me, I'll be able to run a dual track of living it as a parent in the process, but also being able to provide guidance and outside perspective from a board and oversight experience. And then that'll complement the other members of the board that are currently there and Wes and Michael who have students that are in the district who've been in a position I've been in before, but have now gone through it and can bring that perspective. You know, professionally, for me, um, my career is in has been in human resources. And it's it's really shaped the way I look at things, whether it's in a community setting or a work setting. It's about listening and diving in and understanding root problems and being prepared, but working collaboratively. Being in a traditional support function that HR is like. We make decisions, but we also partner with those that make the major decisions within it within a business function. And so that partnership capability is something I've honed really a lot in my career. And that's what a board member does. Uh, we are one of seven. So I I'm not going to be a sphere that drives one direction forward without bringing everybody else with me and us deciding together. So being able to work in an environment like that, I think, uh, helps with my qualifications and then and then my passion. You know, obviously, as a parent, wanting the best for my kids, we moved to Vernon Hills and like many parents, schools were top of the list when we looked at what community we wanted to move to when we came this way. And then as we got here and we had the challenges of the first referendum not passing, it really just like woke my wife and I up and like, what did we get ourselves into if the community is not going to bring improvement versus cool? So 2018 came around, dove in headfirst, did everything that I could with my time to help out. Um, and then even most recently with the Hawthorne Mall TIF referendum, I said, well, wait a minute. What are we doing for our schools, our parks, the libraries? Because tips hold back funding. So just rallying the community to survey, present to the village and to Centennial, the developer to say, we we want to make sure you're not losing sight of what this will do to the community if you don't make some type of accommodations. So happy that the board was able to and and the district is able to work with the village on something. But taking this energy is what got me here. And and put me in a position where people look to me in the community and say, I know him, I trust what he does, he has our interest in minds. And hopefully that means that on April 6th or before, they're going to go to the ballot box and pick my name amongst Wes and Michaels.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. Michael, how about you?
You know, for me, and, you know, I know it, I know backstory doesn't necessarily mean qualified, but I mean backstory for me is I grew up in Vernon Hills. I went to Hawthorne. And, you know, a lot happened in between there and and where I am now. But, you know, at the end of the day, when we had our first child, we now have three, like I think Carl mentioned before, I have three kids in the district, an eighth grader, a fourth grader and a second grader. You know, the oldest one is going to high school next year, but we're going to be in this district for a while. We don't have any plans on going anywhere. And when we had our first born, it was kind of a no-brainer. You know, this is where we wanted to come back to. We were in the city and we came back to this area. I met my wife at Libertyville High School. This is this is where we're from. So, you know, when I look at Hawthorne, when I look at the district, Vernon Hills. You know, it it means something to me. It really does. And I know that may sound a little, uh, you know, cliche, but there's there is that sense of pride. I mean, this is where I was born and raised and this is where I was made. And, you know, I just want to give back to the community. You know, I think there's really something special about having the opportunity to be able to devote time on a volunteer level, uh, you know, and and do something like this. I've been active in coaching my kids and it's not just for the betterment of themselves, but for the betterment of the team. And an opportunity like this, I think, big picture, that's what this is, right? I mean, I'm not doing this because I want my kids to do great. You know, I want all the kids to do great. It's not just about my kids. It's about it's about all the kids. It's about the community. It's about the district as a whole. My kids just happen to be part of that. But at the end of the day, you know, I I just want to be proud of, you know, where where we live, where the kids are, and I want to I want to play a part in that. So what makes me qualified is my passion, you know, it's my commitment. You know, I want to spend the time. I want to be part of that leadership, that vision, and, you know, I want to do that with integrity. You know, in my professional life, I work with a larger, a lot of large accounts. There's a lot of detail-oriented work. There's a lot of fact-checking. There's a lot of organization that goes into that. There's a lot of budgeting. You're dealing with some of these large companies finances, timeframes. And I work with a lot of large groups and that's exactly what this would be, you know, it's it's not me, it's the board as a whole, it's a group. And Carl said it perfectly, you know, it's not about me. It's, you know, we got to keep everybody moving together. There's going to be times when we don't agree and that's okay. I think that's where good conversations come from. That's where good ideas come from. And it's that ability to think kind of outside the box and, okay, you know, maybe come to that compromise. And if you don't get your way, that's okay, but you're still going to support the decision. And that's where I'm at. That's my mindset. And I think that kind of thinking is going to serve me well, serve the board well and serve the district well.
All right, very good. Thank you. And then Wes?
Uh, yes, I I believe my board member experience is my greatest asset. Knowing where we have been as a district, I believe, makes it easier to see where we want to be. Um, I'm running for reelection because I feel consistency and experience on the board are critical to the district's success. Especially as we continue to deal with the ongoing challenges of COVID-19. Uh, and as well as, you know, completing our educational facilities master plan. Hawthorne success depends upon the relationship between the superintendent and the school board. I'm fortunate for the opportunity to work with a talented group of individuals as we teamed up to support Dr. Hannigan. As he navigates all these obstacles and challenges involved in transforming Hawthorne again during a pandemic. Um, I'm proud of what we've accomplished, but we've really just begun. We have a lot of work to do. And I would love to continue serving the districts and Hawthorne during this exciting and challenging time. Um, you know, I'm a parent. I have two students at the school dual language. Um, you know, I'm committed to improving Hawthorne to better, you know, meet the needs of all students and families. We need to work on closing our achievement gaps. Uh, and I'm also committed to, um, you know, equitable distribution of, you know, our resources. Because I believe that's going to be how, you know, we start closing these achievement gaps, which we have. Um, I'm also a taxpayer. Um, so I think I have a vested interest in ensuring that the district maximizes resources so that the taxpayers get the most for their tax dollars. Um, while we're still meeting all the needs of our students, which, you know, is, you know, important too. So, um, you know, if reelected, I will continue to contribute positively to the board. Um, I believe I'm an open-minded, independent thinker. And I I truly believe in the value of public education. And, uh, I, you know, I will promise to always put the education and safety of our students first, as I believe that, you know, the board has shown that we were all committed to doing this year. Um, and it'd be an honor to continue to serve again. So I hope that on April 6th, people, uh, votes and they vote one, two, three for Hawthorne District 73. That's Wes, Michael and Carl.
Okay, appreciate that. So thank you. And then just for the record, I just wanted to know that Alma Miranda was invited to attend this endorsement meeting, but she, uh, we didn't hear from her. So I don't know if she declined, but, uh, but she was invited to attend, just like the three of you were. So and that is my last question. So I appreciate everybody's time tonight and and that is my last question. So I appreciate everybody's time tonight and good answers. I know the voters, you know, have a lot, look forward to, you know, making their decision. So I appreciate your time tonight and that wraps it up. So.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. Take care.
Thank you. Thanks for the time.
Good evening. Yeah.
Bye-bye.